Good evening. Welcome to the October 2nd meeting of Troy City Council. I'm --
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, be with our country as we face the many trials and tribulations that we have these past few weeks, starting with the weather and the hurricanes, and ending today with the multiple murders in Las Vegas. Be with their families and be with the first responders who was there for the victims of that horrible crime. Be with our city as we make, in our council, as we make our decisions this evening, and be with our first responders as they look out for our city and make sure everyone is safe. In his name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mrs. Sne?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Mayor Beamish, I believe you have some comments and introductions this evening.
Well, I sure do. I'm very pleased to introduce to everybody our incoming fifth grade Mayor's Youth Council members. They were selected by their administrator principals at their respective schools. Then we have our returning veterans that are sixth graders, and we also have some outgoing seventh graders who have fulfilled their two-year commitment. And I've asked our advisor, Grant Kerber. Beth and Grant Kerber are one set of advisors. Tim and Carla Davis are the other set of advisors. And we, as you all know, we have lots of activities throughout the year that involve our Mayor's Youth Council. So at this time, I would like to introduce to you, and I'm going to ask Grant to ask the fifth graders to come up first.
Well, it's my pleasure to introduce the new members of the Mayor's Youth Council. As the mayor mentioned, it's quite an honor to be selected. These students were selected by their administrators at their respective schools. So I want to welcome, and I think you're going to enjoy your time on the Mayor's Youth Council. So here's the fifth graders. Luke Kardish, do you want to come forward, please? All right. Andrew Conde. Aiden Scott. Johnny Gruey. Cole Bostic. Relol Chima? Oh, my apologies.
I feel your pain.
Andrew Fussman. All right. Now here's the new fifth grade members of the Mayor's Youth Council. Did I miss one?
Sorry.
Who did I miss?
Who did I miss here? Is it Carly? Don't just come forward and find out. What'd you think?
Lola.
Lola. Oh, Lola Gassar. I'm sorry. Just one more. They're returning for their second year. The mayor was saying we had just a great year last year, and these sixth graders certainly contributed to that, so I want to thank you, and they're in it for one more year. We have Ronan Watkins. Kellen Miller. Robert Cox. Sienna Mater. Elizabeth Catwick. Landon Hill. Cooper Doos. Anna Twist. And Glenn Harris.
Can we get them all?
I think so. Did I get all the sixth graders? I think we're good. All right. We want to say thank you, because this has been a real special group of students. We have some seventh graders that are graduating, and this will be their last Mayor's Youth Council event. I know the mayor wants to recognize them a little bit further and hand them a certificate. But we'll have them come forward. Emma Setzer.
Emma, tell what elementary school you started with.
Cooks No.
Took that down the middle of life.
All right. Tori Rips.
Tori was one of those folks that said, "I really don't want to leave. I want to stay."
And then Kara Steige.
Kara, why don't you just share with the group, what was your favorite memory of being on the two-year? You'll like this.
The bingo with the --
You're nervous.
Senior, senior.
You're working with seniors. The senior sits in center. Okay.
Oh, and then Lily Williams.
Lily's another one, didn't I leave this? She likes to stay on.
All right. Did I get all the seventh graders? All right.
When you get into seventh grade, as you all know, you start finding yourself in all sorts of different elective activities at the junior high school. So many times, they can't come to a meeting like this, but they did. And give them a round of applause.
You are welcome to stay for the meeting if you would like, but you're also free to leave now if you would like to, if you have other obligations and would like to leave. We'll give you a couple of minutes to -- We have a public hearing on our agenda this evening on a rezoning. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 024-2017.
Ordinance number 024-2017, the ordinance changing the zoning of parcel DO-8040730 in lot 4073 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R4 Single Family Residential District to OR1 Office Residential District. This is the address of 93 Robin Hood Lane.
I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning? If so, please come to the microphone. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against the rezoning? Seeing none then, I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of September 18th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of council, September 18, 2017. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee reported that committee recommends legislation be prepared to provide for three legislative items related to the Wilson annexation. The Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to accept the recommendation of the Assessment Equalization Board regarding appeals that were filed to estimated assessments. Resolution number R39-2017, agreement with the Public Defenders Commission for 2018 was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R40-2017, authorizing tax levies, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R41-2017 was establishing municipal services for the annexation from Concord Township was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R42-2017, establishing buffer requirements for the annexation from Concord Township was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R43-2017, consenting to annexation from Concord Township, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R44-2017, accepting report of Assessment Equalization Board and adopting the estimated assessments for the sidewalk portion of North Market Street Improvement Phase Two, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R45-2017, approving the amendment and assignment to Steve and Melanie Smith of a loan from Medallion Investments was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 024-2017, a rezoning was given first reading following various comments. Council then adjourned at 7:30 8:00 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move we accept the minutes as read.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll move on to committee reports and begin with the Safety and Health Committee, and Mrs. Robin Oda, chairperson.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on September 25th to discuss the 2018 funding of the Miami County Health District. Troy's funding is based on the millage equivalent as paid by 22 of the 24 political subdivisions in the county for public health services. Troy's payment is funded from the general fund. The 2018 Miami County Public Health funding would be $350,179.43, an increase of 3% over the 2017 funding. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the 2018 funding to the Miami County Health District for public health services for Troy citizens in the amount of $350,179.43. Respectfully submitted, John Twilliger, Brock Heath, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. Utilities Committee has the next report. Chairman, Mr. Tremblay.
Thank you, Madam President. The Utilities Committee met on September 25th to consider authorizing bidding for the new contract for the printing and mailing of the utility bills. The current contract for this project expires in March of 2018. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a multi-year contract for the printing and mailing of the utility bills at an annual cost not to exceed $90,000. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Twilliger, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Tremblay.
You're welcome.
I have a summary report from the Troy City Council workshop regarding the downtown parking and traffic report. All members of council met in a workshop on September 19th, 2017, at the Bravo Room at Hobart Arena. The meeting was chaired by myself. The presentation discussed the traffic and pedestrian analysis, discussed parking assessment on both on-street and off-street areas, provided long-term recommendations, and discussed implementation impacts. Following the presentation, only for staff planning purposes, council was asked to provide a straw vote on various recommendations with the results of the straw vote attached to this report. There's also a detailed summary that is here as well. Is there any questions from council? That completes the committee reports. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper.
Madam President, first of all, I'd like to say, I wish everybody could use their microphones a little bit better than what they do. The only one I can really hear is Madam President. The rest of you aren't using your phone, your microphones, or they aren't on. It's hard to hear you back there. So try to use your microphone. My question is, being good stewards of our money, $90,000 to send out these bills seems like a heck of a lot of money to me, but I'm just a little person. But I, what was the cost when we used to just send out the little cardboard cards?
Not bad, really. We were sending out 11,500 water bills per month, and that costs roughly 50 cents in postage. The vast majority of this is postage.
Couldn't the City of Troy get one of those exempt things on postage?
Not that I'm aware of. If it is a, if it's a special permit, all the items have to look the same.
But I mean, you know, I mean, it's just, we keep outsourcing, we keep getting consultants, we keep, you know, I just don't understand why we can't do anything in-house anymore. I mean, we're paying big wages to everybody that's working for the city, so it looks to me like the people working for the city could do some of the work. I just, it just blows my mind, $90,000 to send out these water bills and sewer bills. It blows my mind. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments or questions at this time? We'll move on to resolution. Mrs. Knight, read resolution R46-2017.
Resolution number R46-2017, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Miami County General Health District for Health Services. This is the agreement for 2018, cost not to exceed $350,179.43, a 3% increase over 2017, first reading.
Are there any comments from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read resolution R47-2017.
Resolution number R47-2017, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for outsourcing the printing and mailing of utility bills. Cost of the agreement is not to exceed $90,000 per year, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance 024-2017.
Ordinance number 024-2017, ordinance changing the zoning of parcel DO-8040730 in lot 4073 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R4 Single Family Residential District to OR1 Office Residential District. This is the address of 93 Robin Hood Lane. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, had a public hearing this evening, and this is the second reading.
This will go to a third reading and to the --
President?
LNO committee.
This will go to the LNO committee on Monday, the 9th, at 5:00 PM.
That meeting is Monday, October 9th, 5:00 PM. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
There are not.
Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments for us this evening?
No, I've had my share. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just several quick things. Number one, a reminder, trick or treat, I don't know if I can be heard, we'll be on, I believe it's Tuesday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00, so we'll be on Halloween. Number two, leaf pickup started today. Want to remind folks to leave their, excuse me, pardon the pun, to pile their leaves at the curb. Please do not mix brush and grass. Keep those separate. The Dime Mill facility is still open, and you can purchase the tea bags if you'd like to set them up at the curb, and we will pick them up with your normal, on your normal trash day.
How late in the season is the Dime Mill Road facility open? Do you remember?
I, you know, it's now December, okay, we keep backing it up or pushing it forward, I guess, so the mayor is saying December 2nd. We will be open on Monday, Columbus Day, so everything will be picked up as normal. And last item, just to answer Mr. Conner's question earlier about outsourcing, council may recall, approximately six years ago, we went through this analysis, I think it was a little earlier than that actually, and found that we could reduce our staffing level, our full-time staffing level, outsource the mailing of these bills at a much significant savings over doing it in-house. Prior to making the recommendation to ask for another bid process, we did evaluate that once again and find that it is still cheaper for us to outsource that. And as always, we will continue to look at those options whenever we bring something like this to you. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber?
I have nothing to report this evening to Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder that October 19th, at 7:30 PM, is meet the candidate form at the Troy Junior High School. There's a race for second ward of Troy City Council that's being featured, as well as school board members, township trustees, school bond issue, and a park board issue for the county, and a few other issues. This is open to the public. Are there any comments from council members this evening? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to dovetail with Mr. Titterington and point out to Mr. Conner that $72,000 of that 90 is the mailing cost. So you're really getting about $18,000 for labor in that $90,000. So it's not an exorbitant amount of money. Second of all, I have many friends, former coworkers, some coworkers that are living in the, or friends that are in the same business, law enforcement that I was in, that are in the Las Vegas area. And I would encourage folks to make donations at the blood bank, and there is a GoFundMe site that was put together by the sheriff of Clark County in Las Vegas and the county commissioner. If you have the motivation to do that, to help those folks out in that area, and I know many of my friends out there that are working with the tragedy that occurred there yesterday. It's a horrendous event. It affects the first responders greatly and has a very big impact on the citizenry in general. So I would offer up again that prayers and thoughts for those folks out there and my business of law enforcement to assist them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council have any comments or questions? Are there any comments from city staff this evening? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
I am Scott Oda, 165 Tamworth Road in Troy. Full disclosure, I'm sleeping with one of the 14 up. So, that said, I'll continue. I just want to talk about parking. First of all, I want to thank you for defining parking spaces, like on Water Street and some of the side streets. That has just been wonderful, and it has really helped to make sure that, you know, sometimes cars park and they're taking up two spots, and that's just not been the case. It's really worked very well, so I appreciate that very much. Though I have read in the Troy Daily News that you're considering putting some kiosk parking in front of my building in the quadrants. And I just want to make sure that you kind of understand my thoughts on that, because it does impact my business. I have 226 clients that are age 70 and older, not that they all would be this, what I'm about to say, but it can be kind of laborious to have to, if you're coming in to sign a piece of paper in my office, that may be a five-minute process, that I've got to go to a kiosk, I've got to enter in my license plate number, I've got to put in a form of payment, then I've got to walk in my office, sign, and come out. It just seems like a very laborious process. I really think it actually puts my business at a disadvantage to similar businesses that are not operating in downtown Troy. In a essence, you're putting me at a disadvantage to compete, which is a concern of mine. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that as you kind of think through that process of making kiosk parking. I'm also concerned that possibly people could use that then as long-term parking, right? I could come and just put in my $8, I think would be the cost, and take up that spot all day, which would also be kind of difficult for my business. So just if you would think through those things as you consider that, but I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a female, by the way.
Perhaps a conflict of interest would have been all that needed to be said.
Mr. Conner, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. I did some rough figuring back there, from the figures that he gave and everything, and I came up and was, what he added on, what, 1,800?
Should be about 18,000.
I come up with $84,000 instead of 90,000. I mean, that's what it would cost us doing by the figures, the postage and gives 1,800, comes 84,000. So I, where's the savings? Okay, enough of that. Now, I've mentioned before about the streets and the sewers and the manholes and all that, and Mr. Tithin told me at that time that he periodically has people go around and check them. Well, the street man said, "We don't have any system like that. We don't do that at all." So I got another story again. But what I'm getting up to is here, here's a woman on Your View, weeds turned into bushes, and she's talking about Mayor Beamish and Mr. Tithin getting out of their offices and take a ride and see how bad things really are. And they wanted, she wanted to know, did we lay off the street sweeper, or is it broke down? What's going on? I mean, I'm not the only one looking at this problem. I mean, there's other people in Troy that sees the problem, and we don't understand why some of the city officials doesn't see the problem. I mean, it, when they're out driving around, even the Fortlands could stop their trucks. I mean, all they're doing is driving out, and they could stop the truck and scoop up the stuff and throw it in the back of the truck. I mean, it's not that big of a problem. A shovel -- A shovel and a rake or something, you know, I mean, they just got a $3 an hour rake. They're making 36, no, $39 an hour now. So, you know, I mean, let's use this. Let's use our money properly. Let's do a little thing, it's called preventative maintenance, just like the swimming pool out there. We never maintained that, and we had to spend a whole lot of money on making an aquatic center. We had an opportunity to look at Tip City and see how they do, and I, there's a lot of people here in Troy that still go to Tip City instead of Troy, and I don't understand why, but there's something going on. Either they, it's better, or they like it better, or something, but they're driving all the way to Tip City to go to that pool. Something must be wrong with ours. We had the problem with the people out there that weren't married, that were gay, and I didn't agree with the attitude of Troy on that issue. They should have been allowed to have a family thing. I mean, this is a new world. We're in a new world. We have to accept it. We move forward, we go on. You know, let's don't walk backwards. And it seemed like some of the things that the city of Troy is doing, walking backwards all the time. We keep hearing all the time, "We're good stewards of your money. We're good stewards." The one man that retired from the council or quit, I mean, he was a constant, "We're a good person with our money. We're good steward." You know, I mean, I miss his little voice. Yep. But anyway, let's go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any comments? Seeing none, thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peace-filled week. Meeting adjourned.